Public hearing called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Steny.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Fair.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear the, do you hear an approval for the agenda?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. The public hearing this evening will be on ordinance number 669. This is amending CMC Title 14 slash section 14 dash 703. This is the site plan checklist. Is anyone here that would like to talk on ordinance number 669? Motion for public hearing to adjourn.
So moved.
Public hearing adjourned. Regular meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Steny.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Fair.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do you hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Councilman Jim McBride will be giving the prayer this evening. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
It's great. My Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for your blessings and your provisions of this day and your protection. Praying out that you'd be with us during this meeting. God, I pray that you would give us wisdom as we make decisions, and I pray for our city.
And those each day who work, there are firemen and police, public works, all those who work here for the city, I pray for protection for them and their family. Again, thank you for your blessings of this day and go with us through this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jim. Do you hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated September 27th, 2021? That's our regular called meeting and also for our special called meeting on October 7th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. At this time, we'll be recognizing any visitors or citizens with any grievances or compliments that you'd like to come this time. Eddie, you called me three times, but come, man. This is, this is the time. Anyone on the back row wearing a blue shirt would like to speak.
My name is Erin Humphrey, and I live in Norris. Oh, sorry, I don't live in the city of Clinton. But I, we're here, Bill Wright and Eddie Hutchinson, on behalf of our bowling leagues that bowl at the, over here, at the Civic Center.
Community Center.
Yeah, community center. We would like to offer our help in securing a grant to upgrade the bowling alley. We've seen many changes in this community, or I have seen a lot of changes in the community based on grant money. With an upgrade to the bowling alley, we believe that we can make it a viable asset to all ages. The United States Bowling Congress, which governs our bowling associations, and to most bowlers, it's commonly known as USBC, I'll just shorten it, sanctions the alley for which we bowl, our leagues. While I do not believe there's grant money with USBC, I believe they can offer a lot of help in securing or helping us, or guidance to reach those funds. In doing so, if we could upgrade the bowling alley, we feel that the Oak Ridge Association, which is our bowling association, could offer more services to the younger individuals, children in particular, because if they learn the art of bowling, they could actually get scholarships to go to school on. Not only does USBC offer scholarships, but so does the Oak Ridge Bowling Association. Okay, and then for the adults and senior citizens, which a lot of us bowl down there, that's who we are, we could also offer classes for them to, for new people to come and learn. We feel confident that if we had more leagues, which we only have two right now, that would in turn generate more money for the community center. We appreciate your time and attention, and we'd like to continue talks with those who might be responsible for helping us.
When you're speaking, when you're speaking of updates, can you be a little more specific?
Okay. Number one, first priority would probably be to work on the machines, the pin setters, because we do have, right now, our evening league only has eight teams. We keep two lanes open because if they break down, we can at least move and, you know, continue the bowling. The morning league only has seven leagues at this point. It's an all-female, all-ladies league, which is the only one in the association at this time. That would be our first goal. The lanes themselves, I know at one point in time they were resurfaced, and they're not in too bad a shape, really, the lanes themselves. Of course, we would love to have automatic scoring because we have to do it by hand. Of course, that's a learning process, too, a learning tool. Everybody has to learn how to keep score. Most of the time, they do pretty good. But most of it is really the pin setters. I do know, if I remember right, you guys bought some new pins, maybe about, I don't know, five years ago, maybe?
Probably longer than that.
I don't think they were brand-new. I think they were new used, you know? I believe that's what JR told me before he retired, that we had gotten some new ones. When was it? Couple of years ago, that's what I thought.
Okay.
So, we're okay on that. It's really the pin setters.
Okay. Well, I talked to Roger a little bit about that, because I talked to Eddie today, too, and I think, I think probably some maintenance is way overdue at the bowling alley.
And I do know for sure, it's kind of hard to get maintenance work done on those because there's not many mechanics that work on, what, we have AMF?
AMF.
AMF machines.
What nights y'all bowl?
We bowl on Tuesday morning and Thursday night right now.
I was thinking, ET, you used to be a pin setter back in the day, didn't you?
With George Margaret.
Maybe he's reading.
Quarter, quarter a game, yes.
That's right.
That's true.
Oh, yeah.
I thought he was a pin setter.
Yeah. Well, my brothers did do it when they were actually, had to be pin setters down here when my dad bowled down here.
Let me just say, we've heard you, and I'm sure that Roger will be, will be addressing that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
He used to set pins, too.
Anyone else to approach the council?
ET.
Speak now, forever hold your peace. Okay.
Mayor, let me ask Roger, is there a next step, set of pins in what you have now? Are they a modern version of a pin setter that you could go to?
Since those are about 40 years old, yes, they're a lot older than I believe, yes. Those, of course, those are the originals that were installed in 77, when the original She's correct. I mean, those are probably even hard to get parts for them. I think we still are. When I was over there, we were, we were struggling sometimes. Severville changed out probably 15 years ago, and we actually bought some of their used equipment to be able to stockpile, so we would have spare parts.
Sure.
So I'm sure some of that has ran out even. So, I mean, that's something to look at. Now, you know, the flip side of that, and I haven't priced them since I left the community center, new pin setters then were running 10,000 to 15,000, and you got 10 of them. So, I mean, it's, it's a pretty decent investment. I'm sure there are a little more now. But she is right, I mean, it's always been a popular thing. Not only do we do the leagues, but we had one time senior bowl on Thursday afternoons, and we do public bowl on Friday, Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday nights, when we go to winter hours, so that'll increase. We had it yesterday during our Halloween party. We had some type of glow bowl where they use some glow balls with the lights out. So, I mean, it's, it's kind of unique. There's very few community centers. Harris was one of the first to have a bowling alley. Severville put one in theirs, which modeled after the hours, and I think, I think Gallenburg Pittman put one in theirs, too. So, it's kind of unique. It may be pigeon fours, too.
Yeah, the elementary school. We have, we have 40 kids that bowl April and May, so it's.
It's a high school sport now, so I've really been shocked over the years that we haven't had one of the high schools want to take it up as a T double S double A sport.
It's very popular, sure.
Thanks. Good, good discussion. Yes. You got to come to the podium now if you're going to speak. You got to come to the podium. Everybody on TV wants to see you.
I was going to say, a lot of people don't even know the bowling alley exists. I talked to a lot of people, and I say I'm in a league on Tuesdays. Well, we had it on Tuesdays last year, but on Thursdays. And they said, where do you bowl at? And I said, the community center. Didn't even know it was there. I've lived in Clinton since 95. I met Jim, I know Jim and.
Rob.
Rob, Harold, and ET, and everybody since 95 at Second Baptist, but.
They said y'all were on the bowling team, that's why you knew his name.
Yeah. But nobody even knows it's there. I mean, could, could there be a possibility of rubbing that ad in the paper?
Yeah, Facebook, I mean, we could probably do more with that. You know, when I was growing up, we had leagues, youth leagues, that were, it was packed.
Because, I mean, I know with our league there, I think we contributed, what, over $15,000?
Basically between the two leagues, plus the immigrant, and well, probably.
And, I mean, there's a possibility of having another night of a league or something, having a children's league, you know?
Yeah. Good, good suggestions. Thanks, Eddie. Anyone else? Communications from the mayor, I do have a couple of things for Councilman Gann reads a proclamation. A couple of dates to share with you guys. October 29th, which will be this Friday, we have the, the high school homecoming parade starting at 6:00, same route as the other parades. November 1st, we do have a bridge ribbon cutting at 10:30 on the 1st, which is a week from today, and that will be there on the Green Bridge. I don't know what we can tell people where to park or where to go if they're interested in going.
Park at Ingles.
Park at Ingles. T-Dot will be running shuttle buses to the north side, but you'll need to park at Ingles and then take one of the T-Dot shuttle buses to get to the ceremony.
So that will be November 1st. The Veterans Day Parade is November 11th at 6:00 p.m. The Christmas Parade will be December 4th. I think that's been advertised at 6:00 p.m. Again, Jim Sanderson will be our grand marshal. We talked about that last year before the, we decided to cancel because of COVID. And last but not least, we have November 5th will be our soft opening for the dog park at Cardens Farms Park. So, a lot of things going on here the last, the next few weeks, but again, November 5th is a soft opening. We have two dog parks, one's for large dogs, one's for small. The large is three acres, the small's two acres, and it looks really nice. I'm really excited about that getting opened up, just like I'm sure the council is, too. So, those are the dates I have, and now I'll turn it over to Councilman Gann for his proclamation for Red Ribbon Week.
Focus here. Whereas the city of Clinton, like hundreds of other cities across the country, has felt many, many impacts of substance misuse, which has been escalated by the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas fatal overdoses across Anderson County increased 82% in 2020 compared to 11.6% drop in 2019, and whereas prevention measures should be made a priority as substance abuse in adolescents can affect brain development and lead to long-term consequences for individuals and the community, and whereas the ASAP Coalition and the ASAP Youth Ambassadors have been working to eliminate stigma, increase knowledge, reduce access, and encourage a drug-free lifestyle, and whereas the I Am One campaign symbolizes the role each of us can play to be proactive against substance abuse, and all sectors of the community are encouraged to reach out to ASAP to learn of the ways they can find support and, support and support their community, and whereas success will not occur overnight, our patience and continued commitment to substance abuse misuse prevention are imperative, and whereas the red ribbon was closer as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Carmina, a DEA agent who was murdered in the line of duty, and has come to represent the belief that one person can make a difference, and whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to promote this belief and encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention efforts, and now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Clinton to hereby proclaim October 23rd through October 31st as Red Ribbon Week in Clinton, and encourage all citizens and sectors to participate in substance misuse prevention activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but all year long. This proclamation adopted the 25th day of October, 2021.
Thank you, Larry. Under Community Reports, CD School Board Report, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening. A couple of Clinton City Schools updates for you this evening. The Clinton 5K was on Saturday, and that was a wonderful event. Clinton City Schools had a great showing with lots of our children there, running both the 5K and the one-mile race. We did take away three awards, not that we're competitive in any fashion or form in Clinton City Schools, but we did win the largest group award for the 5K, the largest group award for the one-mile, and then we had the fastest runner in the one-mile, which happened to be one of our Blaze Cross Country Team students. And so, we were super proud of the participation and the support that the community gave for that, all the funds. Todd Temple did an amazing job organizing and facilitating that event. All of the proceeds will go to health and wellness grants for Clinton City and Anderson County schools, and so all of that money raised will pump right back into the kids in our community, so we are very thankful for that. Also, good news, COVID seems to be taking a huge decline within our schools, so we are super excited about that. We made it all last week without contact tracing one single classroom, and so we were super excited. And then Monday popped, and we did have to do one contact tracing in a classroom in Clinton Elementary today, but we are so much better than where we were a few weeks ago, so we're hoping we stay on that trajectory. Last week, our students, third graders at South Clinton Elementary School participated in an Arbor Day program. Mayor Burton was there to help facilitate that, but we planted a tree in South Clinton Park, and both Ms. Dungen and Ms. Ramirez's third grade class walked over and helped participate in that, and got to actually dump some dirt on the tree, and so the boys were super excited about that. The girls were a little reluctant, but they did it anyway, and so that was a wonderful opportunity for them. Did want to let you know that Clinton, Clinton City Schools will be hosting in conjunction with Regina Underwood, we are going to host the veteran, Anderson County Veterans Day Breakfast on November the 13th at the Clinton Community Center. And we made the decision to do that because Veterans Day is such an important activity that we do in all three schools when we normally invite the veterans in and do a special ceremony honoring them, and COVID has not allowed us to do that now for two years. And so, we made the decision, since we would not be able to invite them into the schools this year, that we would take the program to them. And so Regina was very nice to let us kind of partner together to sponsor that breakfast, but we have got three performing groups that are going to come and perform for the veterans that morning. We will have our Orf Ensemble, which is a percussion ensemble. We will have a third grade chorus that is going to sing from Clinton Elementary, and then we will also have our Clinton City Schools Ukulele Club that is going to play a song. And so, prior to that event, we have asked some of our fifth and sixth grade students, they're going to do some chalk murals outside on the sidewalk in front of the community center that honors veterans and the service that they have given to our country, and so hopefully they will be able to enjoy those student-drawn murals as they walk in and out of the breakfast. So, we're super, super excited about that event. You may have heard about our excitement on Friday at Clinton Elementary School, but what you don't want to hear as the director of schools when you walk in at 7:30 is, Kelly, we have an issue. We hear water gushing underneath the terrazzo floor. And so, that was indeed what happened, but we had a big water pipe break. As you know, we've got that beautiful terrazzo floor in Clinton Elementary School, but that plumbing is extremely outdated and is becoming very deficient, and Scott Ray and I are working on some solutions to that, but the, our head custodian was exactly correct. When we got in there, you could stand above the terrazzo and you could just hear the water gushing. And so, unfortunately, we had to cut a rectangle piece of our beautiful terrazzo floor, and it was a copper, a hot water copper pipe that was leading into the teacher workroom there around the front, in the front of the building. So, we were able to rectify that, but I do want to put that on everyone's kind of radar that we are going to explore. We have been told that we've got a pretty delicate plumbing system in Clinton Elementary, and we're looking for solutions that would not involve messing with our beautiful floor. So, hopefully, we'll have some recommendations, recommendations soon, but as capital projects, that is, that is something that we are going to have to, have to explore. We did have to cancel school at 10:00 in the morning. That was probably one of the smoothest early dismissals that we have ever done, so the parents and community members were just absolutely wonderful. Our partnership with Boys and Girls Club is beyond phenomenal. We called them, and Mike Swisher within 10 minutes said, bring them on, I've got the staff, we're going to take the kids, so we don't inconvenience parents. And all the other daycares in Clinton did that as well, so we certainly live in a, in a very wonderful community that supports our schools. So, any questions about Clinton City Schools? And I have to pretend to be Scott Ray today because his little baby has pneumonia, and I have made him stay at home.
Any questions for Kelly?
Okay, putting on my Scott Ray hat, this will be super short and sweet, but as you know, the comptroller is requesting that we do budget amendments on a monthly basis to stay in line with what is happening with our budget, so I'm bringing to you today budget amendment number two. In general purpose fund, basically, we are accounting for some of the state grants that we get. We get a Safe Schools Grant. We got a donation for $10,000 for a media center at South Clinton. We had a donation for our Clinton Elementary Digital Sign. Those donations, the media center came from ORNL Credit Union, Federal Credit Union, and the CES Digital Sign came from Rusty Wallace Chevrolet. So, we are accounting for those grant funds and the expenditures. And then in our Federal Products, Projects Fund, we are accounting for our SRR 3.0 money, and that is the, basically, $1.5 million that we will have over the course of the next three years to deal with learning loss, and the 100% of that money is going towards personnel and salaries to help with tutoring and learning loss. So, any questions on budget amendment number two?
Hear motion for passage of budget amendment number two?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Steny.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilman Fair.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes. Budget Amendment Number Two passes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Kelly? Thanks again, Kelly. Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report, Councilman Gann.
The Clinton Regional Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning and Appeals met on October 13th. Really only one item of business for both of those. I applicant Rodney King requesting a setback variance to eight feet for his property located at 810 Clinch Avenue, and also a site plan review for that property located at 810 Clinch Avenue. This is a new experience for me, and I suspect for many others. It is a totally robotic business. Everything will be done, you order online, you pay for it online, the robots glean the product from inside the building and bring it to the kiosk out front, and you pick up your products and go home. It is, it's totally robotic, 24 hours a day. You can get whatever you, whatever they have to sell. So, this, this is kind of a make-work project. He said he's tried to sell this to several businesses. Nobody seems to think it'll go, so he's going to do it himself and see if it'll work. But it'll be in South Clinton, basically between Cantrell's Appliances, where they used to be, and Biker Rags, in that area right there. We did bring up, his original plan did call for a metal building, and we made it pretty clear that he needed to put some kind of a different front on it, either stone brick, stone facade, something like that, that we wanted to look a little bit better than just a metal building. But based upon that, the variance and the preliminary site plan review were both passed.
Any questions for Larry? I appreciate you all taking that, too. Developers coming in as far as the exterior of the building, that's going to make a big difference, I think, down the road. Clinton Utilities Board Report, Councilman Fair.
The Clinton Utility Board met on October 14th, and at the board meeting, we reviewed multiple status reports and also approved two specific purchase orders. We also reviewed, it's a quarterly thing that we are now doing, every quarter, we review the CUB Pension Plan and exercise our fiduciary oversight, and that met with really good review and approval. The plan is doing well, and financials also should be included in your packet, and I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions for Zach? Thanks, Zach. Larry, did you have any other committee reports?
Green McAdoo finished up the year of Jazz on the Hill, very successful, really, really well attended. I think people enjoyed it. As I always say, I think Adam is doing a heck of a job. We're looking at several different things that we're going to try to do. Those are still in the works at this point.
Great. Thank you. Catherine?
Good evening, and thank you for having me, and I really want to just take a minute to first thank the city of Clinton and all the work that they did for the Antique Festival. It went great. I think a lot of people don't know about all the work that goes into that behind the scenes, and it is very much appreciated that we can continue to have these community events that bring people together in our downtown district, so. We have some events coming up on November 6th. We are going to partner with the Anderson County Animal Rescue Foundation, and we are going to do pet photos with Santa in the park, and they are also going to bring some dogs that will be available for adoption there as well, so we're really excited about raising some money for them.
What time's this starting?
It's from 1:00 to 5:00. And then on November 9th, we are going to do an event with Jason Deal, who is a new local celebrity I hear from. He is on a show called Swap Shop that's going to be premiering on Netflix on that day, and so he has contacted some of the teams and personalities that are on the show, and they're going to be there for photos and meet and greet. We're going to have a red carpet on Market Street, and we're going to show some of the episodes that will be on Netflix on that day, and some, we'll have some local food and some other things going on. That's in the evening from 6:00 to 9:00. It's a Tuesday. November 27th, we are partnering with the city for Clinton Christmas Stroll. We will, the city will light their tree, and we are going to have, some of the churches are going to have their choirs on their front steps, and we're going to have Santa and Mrs. Claus available for photos. And the Education Foundation is going to be doing a silent auction on some baskets from local Clinton areas, so that will be great ideas for Christmas gifts with those, and will help fund the Education Foundation. And then December 4th is the Christmas Parade, which you've mentioned, and just a little update, we were working with a company to try to bring the ice skating rink. They ran out of chillers for the ice skating rink, and I thought, maybe we don't want to pull on Market Street this year, so we're going to hit that really hard and try to do that in 2022.
Any questions for Catherine? Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say a little bit more about Jason Deal, the, it was called.
Swap Shop.
Swap, Swap Shop. It's been filming now for almost, almost a year, hasn't it? So, it was very hush-hush for a while, and, but it's really, it's the setting, it's Clinton, Tennessee, and it's the county, so it's not a fictional type of show. It's, they're going to real places that have real stuff in there, so it's pretty neat. There's a little clip they, they were advertising, and I was giving them a hard time, because it was like a 30-second clip, and he was, he was on it for about a second and a half. I said, man, you've been doing this for a year, and that's all you got? You got a second and a half little photo opportunity there, but I think it's going to be good, I think it's going to be good for the community, so I'm excited to see it. Thanks again, Catherine. General Government Report, Mr. Hauk.
Thank you, Mayor. Just got a few housekeeping tonight. Veterans Day, city offices and departments will be closed on Thursday, November the 11th, as observance of Veterans Day. Also, the parade is at night at 6:00. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. December, due to the holiday schedule, we'd recommend changing the December council meeting to Friday, December the 17th at 1:30.
Is that all okay with everybody's schedule? I think traditionally, that's what we've always done. I think traditionally, that's what we've always done. Give everybody a second to look.
December 17th.
1:30. And the luncheon will be? Prior to that. Yes.
It'll be at 12:00, 12:05?
Yes.
You agree with that, ET? Here motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Finally, I'd defer to Gail.
I've got finance and sales tax report. Our sales tax is still in line where it has been. We were at 16.26% this month countywide. It was up 15 and a half, so we're still maintaining that, that level of sales tax. Nothing much to report on revenues expenditures. I did want to mention stuff. I know that some of you have asked Roger about the ARPA funding. We should receive, or we have to receive by November the 13th. The state of Tennessee has 30 days to disperse it. So by November 13th, we will receive 50% of our almost $3 million, it's 2.9 something. So we will receive half of that money by November the 13th. My plans are to just stick it in the bank somewhere and let it sit. A couple of things we're waiting on for sure before we even attempt to do anything. One of those is, right now, we're operating under an interim, interim rule by U.S. Treasury. We don't know when the final rule will come out. We hope the final rule, it won't change the five categories, but we hope it will give us some guidance in regards to those five categories. And if you don't know, those five categories are basically, you can support public health expenditures. You can address the negative economic impact that was associated with COVID. There's a lost revenue calculation, which I've done a preliminary, and our lost revenues is approximately $150,000, so it's not a lot of $3 million. You can do premium pay, and there's also a, a water sewer and broadband infrastructure component. So there's, those five components won't change, but we, the, in the final guidance, we hope will at least stretch those as far as they can be stretched.
Gail, question on that. I've seen some other municipalities and states earmarking some of that for one-time employee bonuses because of the difficulty, and they work through COVID first responders, et cetera. Does that come under the premium pay category?
That comes under the premium pay, and there's all kinds of guidelines associated with that. Basically, you can pay up to an additional $13 per hour for what they classify as essential workers. And that's the big question, what's an essential worker? And so that's why we're waiting on further guidance to be sure what qualifies. Because here's the thing with this money, we, the school system does a lot, but the city, we don't receive a lot of direct federal money. Most of ours is always through the state of Tennessee, so it has an oversight of TIMA or TDEC or somebody, and so they're the ones that's following those federal guidelines, not us, even though we, we do, but it's, it's just a difference. This, this is a direct federal money to us, and so there's a lot of hoops we have to jump through. There's a lot of, I mean, it, I don't know if you're familiar, Davis Bacon Act applies to it if we do contract labor, internal controls, purchasing, the list just goes on and on. So there's a lot of things that I feel like we need to, I need to get better tuned up before we start making plans for this money. The other thing is, the state of Tennessee, where, where it's, I'm still in the process of, every week, they're doing a little training thing, but they have contracted, just like they did with the 10 cares money, they contracted with Horn LLP for them to do an oversight, training, a lot of different things in regards to the money. They will open up a portal through the state on January 22nd that we can submit our spending plans to, not that they can approve or disapprove, just to help us say, okay, I, I think that, you know, that will work, because we are a direct recipient. So a lot of more responsibility falls on us than what we've seen in the past. And even though $3 million isn't a huge amount of money, it's still a good chunk of money for us. And the other thing is, one of the other big things is, the state has a big pot of money too. And so, for instance, TDEC has been approved or is in the process, they're going to disperse, I wrote that down somewhere, 1. something billion, I think it was on TDEC, 1.35 billion is going to come through TDEC.
Is there any bowling alley money in there?
Not in TDEC. And of that, a billion dollars of that is going to be non-competitive grants. So in other words, there, there's a formula. And so Anderson County is going to receive about $11 million in TDEC money that they have to disperse then to, for the water sewer infra, that, that infrastructure through the county. So CUB will be eligible for that, Anderson County Water, et cetera. So, you know, it's not just us, it's a lot of money coming down the pipe, and so we, it's going to take us a while. The comptroller's office has basically told us, sit on it until we get some more things in place, and so that's what I plan to do until we can see, get a really good plan together of what's the best way to spend it and what, what expenditures qualify.
It sounds like the $11 million that you were talking about coming to the county, that it is, it's still kind of tied up the way it was with the other money that we, as far as, as water and sewer and...
It'll be water, sewer, stormwater.
Yeah, that, that TDEC money strictly be from water, sewer, stormwater. It's a total different...
So when's the drop dead date as far as the other money? We, we, that's almost $3 million. When's the dead, the drop dead date? This is what it's for, and this is all you can use it for?
Okay, well, our period of performance is from March 3rd of 2021 to December 31st, 2026. It has to be obligated by December 31st, 2024. So if we obligate it, but, so you've got a lot of time to spend it.
But I guess my, I didn't answer that question very well. So when do we, what date are we going to know what we can spend it on? What's the scope of everything we can spend that money on? Because it's kind of trickling out as far as additional things.
Can you state your anywhere?
Well, the only thing with that is, the, the January 22nd portal is just a mechanism that the comptroller's office has come up to assist us in saying, okay, I think I want to do premium pay, and this is what I'm classifying as essential workers, and this is why I think they're essential workers. Do you think that's okay?
So they're just giving advice?
Yeah, they're just giving advice. As a, what they call an NEU, a non-entitlement unit because of our size, we have to report, I don't think we have to report quarterly, I think it's annually. The process of us reporting, okay, this is, this is what we have obligated, this is what we've spent, but the money all comes to us upfront, which is unlike any other grant we normally get. Normally, we spend money, then we reimburse. So they're giving us the money, and then we report back, okay, this is how we've spent it, and it, I mean, obviously... Yes, and, and if we were to spend it on something that they disqualified, then we would have to pay back the federal government. So we want to be very careful. I know there were a lot of smaller cities that they didn't want the money because of the...
Can we have theirs?
The mechanisms tied to it. It is.
Well, I just think we need to consider, once we get all the details, and I'm sure staff will talk about it in this council, doing something for the employees, you know, in some sort of fashion for the work they put into it.
Any other questions for Gail? Thanks, Gail.
And the only other thing I have is, yesterday, the Recreation Department did do their Halloween party. That was pretty successful, from 2:00 to 5:00, probably had over 1,000 attendees there. So it was successful at the end.
How many extra hot dogs we have left over?
Oh, we had a few hot dogs, but we cooked several too.
I'm sure they'll go to good use.
Yes.
Christmas luncheon.
Any, that's right. Any questions for Roger?
Roger, I was looking over the, the Ingalls letter, and one of the suggestions there is a, our local IDB board, and that kind of came up during the Dartery discussions. Any updates on whether we should do that as a, y'all are going to investigate that some? If that makes sense, it may not make sense, I don't know.
I mean, staff's thought processes, we really still don't see a complete benefit of it. I mean, the TIF policy of possibly, you know, having a different TIF zone, I think was something that, that could pop, would, would be a possibility, but if you remember back, then we, we went back to our old TIF file, which has been five years ago, and we created the, the policy we got now. That is actually something that the, the IDB creates, and I'm sure they would do it with what parameters we would ask them for, and then they bring it to us in the county for us to do the resolution to adopt it. So I, you know, once again, I'm still not sold on what, what would be the benefit of, of having our own IDB when we actually have a county one that actually has residents of Clinton, so I'm still not completely convinced of what, what would be the positive and negative benefits of a, of a Clinton IDB. Still not sold completely one way or the other.
Any other questions?
Is there any back room discussions on what Ingalls has a plan for? No, just that, just that letter?
Possibly be back in town here in a few weeks, and maybe meeting with them.
Good.
I would, I'd like to see us, we talked a little bit about the, somebody else want to say something? I looked around like somebody else is about to talk. About doing the TIFs for, for designated areas, I think, I think when we talked about it being more in the South Clinton, that, that zone, and then also that Market Main zone for these smaller TIFs, $500,000 minimum type TIFs. Maybe we can talk about that next month and have it on an agenda to, to move forward on that also. Because we talked about it, probably need a little more further discussion, a little more explanation on that.
Would you like to first have maybe a recommendation?
Yes, I would personally.
Figure, maybe a area?
Yep.
I'd like first do anything we...
Discussion at least.
I'd like to do anything we can to help in the South Clinton area. Be reasonable and fair. But yeah.
I'll, I'll only say, I know Rocky Top changed theirs some. I'm not sure what the parameters they put in, and I'll reach out to them.
Well, they want to talk to, maybe Bear with the IDB board, being, being the chairman and talk about...
That would be good, down at 4:00.
Yeah.
I'll reach out to them.
Okay. So I'll come in there, bud?
Can, can we just quickly just tell people out in, in, on the TV there what we're talking about? There was a meeting with the city and Ingalls officials, and there were some discussions about redevelopment and, and turning that potentially into a super Ingalls or some mixed use. Is that correct?
Yeah, they, they turned it into a, a super Ingalls with some mixed use, some other commercial spaces there, possibly even with some...
Residential.
Residential in there.
Well, they say that, but everything they want to do, we have in place. We're not, we're not, they're not waiting for us. We have everything in place for a TIF.
For some of the other, uh, commercial areas.
Yeah, I'm talking about the smaller bit, the existing buildings that encourage them, maybe if they want to do some remodeling, some updates to help them out with that. So, good.
Which is all positive.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Any other questions for Roger?
Scott, we also have budget amendment. Sorry about that.
Okay. You want to go ahead and do that?
It's budget amendment number three. You have in your packets, and to keep up with, we're taking out the 20, 25,000 that you allotted last month, and the rest of it is additional capital outlet projects.
Here most, most, a motion for approval for budget amendment number three.
So moved.
Say. Have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Scott, I would like to say on the Dog Park that you mentioned, a good portion of the work over there, probably 85% of it's been done in-house, and quite a bit of that's been done by the Public Works Department, some of it by the Recreation Department, but Duane's crew's done quite a bit of it. As you said, they've done, done a really good job, so I'd like to tell those guys, appreciate them, and, and the guys at the Recreation Department.
Wayne's out there driving the bulldozer. You, you put the grass down at a very good time. Did he beat the rain?
Beat some of it.
Good, good. It looks great, it really does, looks fantastic. Thanks again. Under second final readings of ordinances, ordinance number 669, this is a Manning CMC Title 14, Section 14-703, which is a SOC Plan Checklist.
Here motion for approval? So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Bryan.
Yes.
Councilman Harold.
Yes.
Councilman Stangney.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilman Fair.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes, ordinance number 669 passes on second final reading. Any old business before us?
Mayor Burton, I wanted to ask council their opinion on magnet mills. I mean, as I've watched that in the last 12 months, you know, we were told that they were going to have, and I remember you, you said, is it going to be pristine, it's going to be planted grass, it's going to be put back? And, and the answer was what?
Yeah.
Yes. Just one man's, layman's opinion, it's not been followed up, and it hasn't been enforced. I, I see high grass, I see abandoned trailers, I see standing water, I see what appears to be still an eyesore of sorts. Now, granted, the building's not there, I give you that, they knocked that down, but I, I, when I look at that, if that, if that property's up to code, then we need to fix our codes, because it is an eyesore for our community. Now, that's just my opinion, and it may not be one shared by council, but I wanted to bring that up. I'd like to see them, the codes revisited. Make sure, if they're up to code, say, Councilman Fair, they're all good, that's our codes. And then I can talk about how we need to reamend the codes, but I'm sorry, I'm, I'm very passionate about this, because that is a very important piece of property for our city.
And I would, and I would echo those comments. I mean, I've passed by there, of course, I hadn't said anything in several months. I've passed by there several times, and what I say to myself is, so is that what we wanted? I mean, and, and I don't think it is. So where is that? I mean, what's, I mean, again, if it's...
The metal building's actually being, being utilized. It's being rented, electricity hooked up to it, so it's, it's being utilized, and I think the trailer is, is with the business, so...
But aren't trailers like that? And I don't know the answer to this. I thought previously, they had to be moved. I mean, they had to be operational. I mean, not that they have to be moved every day. I mean, I know the ones before, they had trees growing up from my row, so they hadn't been moved for years. But, and, and along with that, I know of some areas in our city, are we enforcing like abandoned vehicles or vehicles that are there? Is, is the, is the code, and this is a question, as long as they are properly licensed, they're within code? Is that right?
They have to be operation.
Have to run and be, have a lot of, an active license point, okay.
And they can be, if they're an antique and have an antique tag, so there's some exceptions. If they're in a garage, a covered area they're working on, so there's some...
But in general, that's kind of...
Kind of a lot of times, you know, abandoned vehicle, Jason will actually go out and make them start them, or...
Oh, really? That's good.
Then he makes them, show them that they'll run, so...
So are we, are we satisfied? I guess, is, is staff satisfied with magnet mills? Or, I mean, we, we as a council depend upon staff to act on that and enforce that. Is staff satisfied with how that looks?
Council, to be honest, we haven't had a conversation about that in a while. I will do that. I mean, we've, we've had several other things going on in town that's, that's, I hate to say it, but probably got pushed to the back a little bit, but I'll, I'll follow up in the morning with them, see where we're, where we're at, what, what we could do.
I was just going to ask maybe for, for staff to ask the codes, John, compliance of codes on that property, and, and maybe you can update us next meeting. If there's any, any, anywhere there, there is, there are issues to, to certainly act with a sense of urgency on that.
And this, this one thing we're actively in, in the process of doing is act, looking for, to, to actually staff that department, because it, this, they're covered up, so busy. You know, we've got so much activity going on, both codes and, and more the building both codes and the building end of it than the other. So we're looking at probably a planner. Right now, we've got a part-time planner that we get two days a week out of Knoxville. So we're probably hiring a full-time planner to take over some of the activities here in the office. So free them up, backseat about and fill more.
So I think in summary, I don't think I'm happy with the way it looks. I don't know what the rest of the council is, but if it's, if we're not happy with it, it's either one of two reasons. And I'd probably, it's not the first one. The first one is, then staff has not enforced our current regulations. But then if we need to change some current regulations, or maybe strengthen some current regulations to help staff, please advise us. Because I believe we're, I believe we would be willing to review those and act upon those as needed.
I think what we've been challenged with with that property specifically is, they'll do just enough for a little while. Then there's been... I think, I think the codes has almost set up, that might be my, that might be a bad perception on my part, where if they're making progress, then it's okay. Versus a completion of progress is never realized. It's always just do enough to get it, keep it under the radar.
And it's probably been, lose time for now, six months, I'd say maybe along that, we talked to Albert Harb, and the last conversation is he need to close his file, and we told him no, so...
Okay, good. And I agree with what you said, Mayor Burton, I think that's exactly what happens. We go over there to take some sort of adverse reaction or enforcement, and they start moving the dirt again, one spoonful at a time, and say, well, we're working on it, and...
Maybe that's what we can change, from a code standpoint.
We just wanna help codes. Whatever, if there's anything that this body can act on, I think we would be willing to entertain Mr. Stokes and John if they go out. And they, you know, here's, here's a little bit of a loophole. We need this changed, or we need this strengthened, I need council's help on this. Let us know.
And if I'm wrong, I mean, I go back to, to this council, does that look, does that piece of property look like it's up to code to you? And if it is, and I'm, we're in minority, then so be it. But I, I can't, when I look at that, I just, I read our codes. And it's not, it's not a, you know, I don't wanna, want staff to feel like I'm overly criticizing. No, we're working together. And what I'm saying is, if you need something from me to help you, if you need something this council to help you, that's the discussion I wanna have.
Their job is not an easy job. And in today's environment, people don't take pride in what they have, they don't clean up, they don't pick up. And it's not gonna get any better. I hate to say that, sound like an old man up here, but I guess I am an old man.
And their cups are covered up too.
But it is, I mean, my folks were blue collar workers, daddy never graduated high school, grandparents didn't. But we always picked up, and they cleaned up, and things were mowed, you know, grass was planted. And that, we're in a different environment now. So those guys' job, it's not an easy job.
Okay, we'll check on it.
Okay, yeah, just follow up on that, I appreciate it. And those guys are doing a good job, it's, we're not beating them.
No, no, they are.
I think, I think like John, Jim said, if we can help them from a code standpoint, please, please bring it to our attention. Any new business for us tonight? E.T., you got anything?
No, I'm good.
You got the dates of the fair next year? Is that too early to now?
231 days.
All right. You just made that, you pulled that number, that's not, do a fact check on that, Kelly, because that's not true. Motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
Please adjourn.